Pledge legions.
I pledge the legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don. Don.
Again, thanks for coming. At this point in time, Patty, would you do roll call?
Wanda.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Here.
John.
Here. Next on the agenda is financial conflict of interest. Start with Don.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I have a conflict with claims number two.
Okay.
I have none.
Thanks, Dan. At this time, we'd need the approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
I believe there's a modification. I believe item number seven. Sheriff Chrissy won't be present tonight, so with that modification, I would second.
And we'll postpone that to...
Next meeting.
Next meeting. So I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes with the adjustment of or the postponement of the number seven, item number seven. Sheriff Chrissy will not report this evening. Any further discussion?
Approve of the agenda.
Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Next up, public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No matter, no action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individual or organization. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, a public comment is closed. First item up for on the agenda is the approve of the milling bid by our highway superintendent, Mike Solatchek.
This is a Loisa bid for doing the milling. This was bid through Harding County. We're just piggybacking off of their bid. It's not uncommon for other counties to use their, each other's bids, so this would be for the 440 project south of the Fallon Road.
So both, basically, you're saying that the counties work together for the good of all?
Yep. I already had a couple of counties come after us for a couple of our bids, so.
So you need a motion to approve it?
Yep.
I would move to approve the milling bid as presented in the packet, item number five.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Don, to approve the milling bid. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Next up, Brian, our quarterly report from our register of deeds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners. First quarter, 2024. I'll just read a few of the numbers and then elaborate on them a little bit. We had, we issued 241 birth certificates, 289 death certificates, 20 marriage licenses. We recorded 163 deeds, 111 mortgages, and 109 mortgage satisfactions. We had 276 county liens in the first quarter, which is about 50 fewer than the average quarter in, in 2023, and also the 113,682. That's the total of the county liens for this first quarter, but the average quarter in 2023 was 136,000. So it's a little early to know if we're seeing a downward trend, but hopefully that is the case. We saw 8,000 in copies revenue, 29,700 in transfer fees, 27,160 in regular fees. Total fees collected for the first quarter were 64,942, which is about $6,500 higher than the first quarter of 2023. Total real estate sold was 29.7 million in the first quarter, which compares favorably to the 21.9 million in the first quarter of 2023. This isn't listed as one of my numbers, but we also filed 24 Platts in the first quarter, and that compares to 13 in the first quarter of last year. Platts are usually a good indicator of economic activity to come. So anyway, it's been a good quarter. January and February were kind of average, very similar to last year. Things really took off for us in March, which is the main reason our first quarter was considerably better than 2023. In March, we collected 27,280 in revenue compared to 20,997 in the previous March. We recorded 15.1 million in real estate sales in March, which more than doubles the 7.3 million in real estate sales March 2023. Just business in general has been up through the, also these last two weeks, you know, which is into the second quarter, but businesses have been up then as well. Through the first half of this month, we collected 15,000 compared to 7,700 during the first two weeks of April 2023. We also recorded 8.1 million in real estate sales just these first two weeks of April, which compares to 6.7 million for all of April 2023. So we're off to a good start toward a better overall year in 2024, despite the fact that interest rates are still high. Hopefully, we'll get a couple of cuts and we'll see the real estate activities per even further. Wanted to give you a quick update on our historic photos project. We added eight photos to the first floor hallway last month, and yesterday, we placed 10 more photos in the second floor hallway, so you'll see those if you get up there. We may add a few more, but the project is nearly complete. We have stayed under the $2,000 budget that you allowed us for that project, and so I thank you for supporting us with that. That's all I have.
Brian, what's, what's the typical composition of those county liens?
Well, you know, they have been escalating for the last few years, but this first quarter of this year is... Oh, you mean, what kind of liens are they? What they are? Typical court-appointed legal counsel, medical care for jail prisoners, hospital bills for indigent people. We charge prisoners in our jail $10 a day for the, you know, privilege of being in there, and that adds up. You know, John had asked at my last quarterly report, what was the total dollar amount from the 1,430 county liens we had last year, and that total was 545,865. And of that amount, Don, 221,763 was for legal counsel. And to put that in perspective, we only collected about 30,000 in reimbursement for legal counsel last year, so hopefully...
How much did we collect for all liens altogether?
I didn't ask, yeah, I didn't ask Patty that number. I can get that back to you next time. But bottom line is, you know, obviously, and I'm sure every county feels the same way, is the majority of them are never paid and probably never will be.
In your position, Brian, do you, you have a suggestion on how we can, how we could approach collecting more of them?
Well, it's so much of it, I know I've said this before, so much of it's controlled by statute. We're limited, just like any county, in far as any actions we could take against these folks. And also, as I said, I think at the last quarterly report, the only leverage we have is when they try to buy a house or get a loan, then the title company is going to call them on that lien and make them pay it before they'll let them buy that house. But a lot of our lien customers are not homeowners, and so that doesn't come into play there.
Sure.
I'll give it some thought, but I don't have any magic answers right now.
Perfect. Okay, any other questions from the commission for Brian?
No.
Hearing none. Thank you very much, Brian. Appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the register of deeds report.
Thanks, Dan. I got a motion to approve from Dan and a second by Wanda. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. As stated, our sheriff's report has been postponed. Eric with the ambulance service.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners. You should have received a packet for the quarterly report for Yankton County EMS. I'm going to start off with Yankton County EMS call volume. It's going to look like this for you folks. So just give your report since the beginning, January 1st up until the end of March, we had 579 total calls, which puts, it's pretty much the same pace as where we were at last year, so we're looking at 23 to 2400 call volume. Keep in mind, historically looking back five years, even fall in line with the AP Triton stuff, February and March and part of April are kind of our lull in the year, so we're only expecting those numbers to continue to increase. The second page of that is just shows you a call by hour, which is kind of intriguing because it seems like 11 o'clock in the morning till 1:00 seems to be really a peak, and it just kind of maintains from there, and so we kind of watch those times and make sure that we're prepared for it. You can see that first crew calls for January, we had 147, second crew 47, third crew calls, which means those are extra calls above two ambulances already out. We had 11, and we had two fourth crew calls, which just shows we've had some pretty busy times in there. In February is 156 for first crew calls, second crew calls 30, and then there were still five third crew calls. Those numbers tapered off just a little bit for March. We had 141 first crew, 35 second crew calls, and there were no third or fourth crew calls out. You can look off to the side, and it says the aggregation total incidents by unit. We rotate our units to make sure that proper wear and tear in those, and we try to match mileage to get the best benefit out of those assets and rotate them through, trying to be good stewards of that and rotating those vehicles appropriately. There's a next page looks like this. It's the total number of transports. Now, I'd like to just talk about that one a little bit because over those three months, January 1st through March 31st, we had 351 transports. That's patients we picked up in town or in the county and transported to the hospital. That's not to be confused with the next sheet, which is the number of transfers. The number of transfers are from either Sacred Heart to Sioux Falls or another outlying facility or picking up flight teams and such. You can see that we still had 62 transfers within those three month periods, and so in visiting with carry-up at the hospital and their group, they seem to be very pleased with the way EMS has been handling the transports and our availability for that, so we've been continuing to work on that process. Now, the part that you folks are all really interested in, the next sheet, which will look like this, is going to be the charge summary. So the charge summary, something new that we actually started, you'll see on the kind of second page, we started charging for consumables, which is, we found out at the conference back in February for the ambulance association. The problem with this is, is we implemented it January 1st. Most insurance companies are not paying for consumables anymore. We were kind of hoping that we'd be able to pick up some breadcrumbs and stuff to help cover some additional costs, but visiting with our billing company as well as a few other folks, they're going away from that, so we may end up scrapping that. So, so you all have a better understanding of how ambulance billing works. For the first quarter, we basically billed for 351,000, well, 51,000, 351,000 plus. Our mileage, we ran 3,769 miles, and we get paid a certain amount for miles on that. Oxygen would be one of those consumables, so we picked up, you know, roughly 600 bucks. We did 40 IVs in the three months. That comes up to $3,400, so you multiply that out. We're really hoping to pick up breadcrumbs, and we will continue to do that to make sure that we're being good stewards of the stuff that we're utilizing. If you look at the second page of the charge summary, it just kind of goes through the ALS-related stuff, the 12 leads, intracranial intubation, some of that stuff, advanced airways. It talks about some of the numbers of drugs that we utilize, and then the rounded mileage. The rounded mileage, the insurance companies allow for, and it basically says that if we drive 3.2 miles, it automatically rounds up to four, and that is just something the insurance company will automatically do. Well, a perk to us is it picked up an extra 20, almost $2,600 for that three-month period. It's just something that's built in the insurance coverage. So overall, the first three months, it was roughly $433,675 that we pulled from this particular segue. The downside of this, Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement, right now, we're averaging about 38% of that, so that's just off the top. So, you know, like I told John the one day, I said, it's kind of like his, his company, if they take a truckload from here to Orlando, he's only getting paid to Arkansas. That's how EMS billing works, and there's really not a good way to overcome that. 69% of EMS agencies in the country run in the red. They run at a loss, and there's not a good fix of that unless you get Medicaid, Medicare fixed, and I'm not sure what the answer to that one is. If you look at the activity by our primary payer groups, and this comes directly out of our ESO billing side, you can see on the back page, it says report two. So basically, our billing ladies ran 1,389 reports. They're trying to go back to when we utilized QMC to pick up some of the stuff that QMC did not bill for us. So it roughly equates to they billed out 1.3 million and change. The problem with that is the insurance company write-off is 1,36,000, and so our estimated net income on that is really about 309,000 after the payer groups come in and pay for it, and that's historically what we've kind of seen. The good news is, and John, as our liaison, had talked to me about getting some revenue possibilities moving into the future, kind of an idea of what 2024 would look like. Last year, it was $637,000 is what we kind of brought in. We're kind of look at that 848 mark, so we're actually tipping the scale better to our favor, and that's probably a low estimate right now, is what my billing ladies are telling us. So we're kind of heading in the right direction. We're still in the process of working through because we're getting our software company that handles our patient care reports, dealing with the stuff that handles the insurance companies, that clearinghouse, they're still working through some processes for us, so it's still going to take a period of time until that's really implemented out. To give you an update on AP Triton, I kind of thought today was going to be a meeting that we could have with the city council as well as a few of the commissioners, and they had kind of switched it. It was mainly between the AP Triton leadership group and myself, and it's going over their final report. There were a couple items in there that I really didn't like. I think it skewed numbers, not for or against us. I just think it was unclean, and so we did bring that up, and they are going to go through and tweak a couple of those tables. They will have the final draft to me by this weekend, and then I will actually get it out to all of you so you can go through. It's like a 79-page document. You'll love the reading. It's fantastic. There's a lot of really good information in there, but as I talked to Dan and John and Gary about it, a lot of that information, if there's ever, you ever want in the future, we have the capabilities to pull that at any point in time, and we can break it up per quarter, per year, whatever you'd like to do, so happy to work on that and see where we can get that to go. So hopefully, by the 22nd, at the latest, you will actually have the final report. The evening of the 22nd, I'm actually going to be presenting at the city council meeting as well on the AP Triton update for them. They asked me to come back for that. Last thing I have for you folks this evening is we would like to surplus three items. We have some, three Life Pack AEDs. They're a Life Pack 500. They need to be surplused out. They don't even make the parts to maintain them, the batteries or anything to go in hand. They're currently sitting in my office. They're not a really pretty paperweight. Just would like to surplus them and get them out of my office if we can get that to pass, so. Do you have any questions about the numbers that we're running, about the possible budget or the AP Triton stuff?
So the activity by primary payer groups, you mentioned that...
Yep.
That our billing gals...
Yeah.
Found 1,356,000 that were, was either not billed or misbilled by QuickMed. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's a combination of, of calls that we've had from the beginning of August when we got rid of QuickMed claims, as well as going back and picking up some of the stuff that was not billed, correct?
So we're billing, and we're billing an additional one or... 1.3 or 1.036 million is an adjusted number?
That is the expected write-off from the insurance companies.
So of that, we should be, should be receiving 309,000, not necessarily receiving that in cash, but that is expected funds that the insurance companies should have paid, but they're not.
That's, that's the expected revenue off of that billing cycle, the 1,382 reports that they filed, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Eric?
Very good report. Thank you.
This time, I'd like a motion to approve the...
I shall move.
Second.
Motion by Don, second by Ryan to approve the ambulance first quarter report. Any further discussion?
I move to approve that the three machines can be surplus, which are...
Can I have, can I have a vote on the motion?
Yeah.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, I would approve, or would obtain a motion to approve the surplus of the three items?
I would move to surplus the three Life Pack 500 automated external defibrillators.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to surplus the three items mentioned. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Folks, have a great evening.
Gary?
Good evening. We got three Platts tonight. First one's a replat of lots 1 through 12, Block 5, Timberland Park Edition in the southeast quarter of Section 15, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. Hereafter to be known as Tracks 1 and 2, Block 5, Timberland Park Edition in the southeast quarter of Section 15, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval?
I have a motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Wanda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Second one's a replat of Track 1, Reed Edition in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 10, Township 93 North, Range 55 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. Hereafter to be known as Track 2 of Reed Edition in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 10, Township 93 North, Range 55 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
I move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Ryan, second by Wanda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Last one's a few more lots of the Forest Lake subdivision. Plats of lots 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, Forest Lake subdivision in the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 13, Township 93 North, Range 57 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval?
I have a motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Wanda to approve that Platts. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on, need a motion to approve April 2nd, 2024, meeting and meeting minutes.
Move approval.
Motion by Wanda. Can I get a second?
Second by me.
Second by Don. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, claims number one.
I would move approval of claims items number one.
I have a motion to approve claims item number one. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve claims number two.
I move to approve claims number two.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor... Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
One abstention.
One abstention, one to abstain, motion carries. Are there any further public comments? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comments. Commission updates. Dan, you got anything to say?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. Wanda, any updates?
Nothing of note, no.
Ryan?
Last week I went to the Government Technology Summit in Pierre, it's interesting. A lot of talk about cybersecurity and government API, AI in government. So definitely the AI thing has got a lot of push for use. And so that will be very interesting when it actually comes time to implement. But yeah, keep me in touch with that. And actually, we did a lot of scouting for things that we should be using in our county, so.
Good. Got any updates?
Yeah, I got a whole bunch of them.
Okay, start.
First of all, it's maybe just for discussion, I think maybe we all got a memo about a training session for grant writing. And I think we definitely should send one or two people that have the talent to write grants, if we have that, to that class. I talked a little bit with Gary about it, and
I think, I think it's important for someone, or a few people actually, in our departments to capitalize on, on writing these grants and actually understanding what's going to be implying when they do write the grants, and what's gonna, how it's going to affect us in the future for that. So I think, I think it's very important if, if we're going to do, if we're going to continue searching for grants out there, that we know how and what we're, what's going to be expected if we, if we apply for that grant and get it. We want to know the underlying causes also that's gonna, you know, the future's going to take, so.
I guess I was, if you could line the person and the position up, maybe it's a part-time position, part-time work. But when it's, the class is in May, isn't it, Gary?
June. And it's not that expensive, I don't think, was it?
Four hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah. And then just a time, time out there.
Yeah.
I think we should take a look at it, and I know that if it's in May.
It's in, it's June tenth or eleventh.
Okay, so, so I think we should, we should think about who we want, who, you know, who we want to send out there to do that, and, and possibly take a look at sending one or two people out there.
Yeah, I think we have to, I think you identify the departments that could really take advantage of grants. See that if they have that skill to sit there or find that
Exactly.
And then that's, and that's how we choose how.
And maybe, and maybe that's something we could all kind of consider and come together at the next meeting and decide who we're going to send out there.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think we ought maybe expand, and maybe that was what you were getting at, Ryan, I didn't get it. Maybe it's not, not even a current county employee. Maybe it's somebody that's got that special skill.
Well, I, I think I see what you're saying too, is like, maybe it's also someone, maybe there's someone in the county that can be a, that could be a resource for all groups, all, all departments. I don't know if that's in the
That's my
State's Attorney Office, the Auditor's Office, somewhere, somewhere that's like, it can be, like, someone has that skill and maybe want to expand on that skill and be sort of also someone that would assist any department with a grant writing project.
Sure.
Doesn't District Three are supposed to help with that?
Yeah.
Because we pay, I mean, we pay District Three.
That's true too.
We already pay them.
I agree that they, they should be helping us do that, and nothing against them, but I think, I don't think it would hurt to have one or two people in our, under our observance also to say, hey, Ryan has heard about this grant, and Ryan don't have time to write the grant, but District Three, Three doesn't have the time to write that particular grant, that we can call on someone to do that and make sure that we don't miss that opportunity.
I'm not, I'm not running down District Three or suggesting they aren't doing their job. All I'm saying is, if you look at projects that, that they do in District Three in this, what, six or eight county area, there's dozens of grants that come in, small towns, we, we don't hear, I never hear of them. We need to have somebody looking for them things and, and writing them. Other than that, I got a GOED update. I went to, last week I attended a meeting at RTech. RTech is in the process of looking for a new building or an existing building that they can hold their welding classes in. They currently share, or they're currently allowed to have space in their present building by the school system. And the school system has enough need and demand by kids to run a hundred percent full all the time. So RTech is kind of asked to look for that, and they're in that process. I'm going to go through my GOED update. At our, I attended a GOED conference in Sioux Falls last Thursday, and it was statewide. Just some, some rankings. Prudent state government, first in the nation. Most business-friendly state by CNBC, second in the nation. Lowest cost of doing business, Moody's Analytics, second in the nation. Best business tax climate, Tax Foundation, twenty twenty-four, second in the nation. Most free state, Cato Institute, third in the nation. State for Growth, this came from U-Haul, we're in the top five. So some really good overall factors there. Now for some actual breakdown of business analytics. The Wallet Hub recently released a study on the best and worst states for taxpayer return on investment. South Dakota ranked third highest attributed to our state's dedication to spending on critical infrastructure like highways, combined with a low per capita tax burden. Wallet Hub also released a study on the best and worst states for doctors. South Dakota ranked second overall, with high starting salaries and numerous employment opportunities noted as reason. Under the general economy, the Bureau of Economic Analysis recently released a swath of state-level economic data, including fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three and annual data for twenty twenty-three, and this is how it looked. Year-over-year, our state's real gross domestic product growth was four point five percent, ranked ninth highest nationally, and surpassed both the nation and our regional comparisons. Similarly, our year-over-year wages and salaries growth was seven point three percent before accounting for inflation, ranking twelfth highest and outpacing the nation in our region. This growth is reflected in other metrics as well. In the past twelve months, South Dakota saw eleven thousand six hundred total business applications, up twelve point eight percent year-over-year. Roughly thirty-seven hundred of these applications are current, are likely to produce a payroll. Seventeen hundred have planned wages and seven hundred come from corporations. Since the most South Dakota exports are agricultural products, we're often significantly underrepresented as an exporter of goods due to tracking issues. Using USDA data to account for these issues, it's estimated that the true value of South Dakota exports was seven point nine billion, with five point seven billion in agricultural exports. Looking at South Dakota's bottom line, each month of fiscal year twenty twenty-four general fund data are in. The South Dakota's ongoing general fund receipts for the fiscal year are ninety-nine point five million higher than at this point last year, a growth of six point three percent on pace with legislative adapted estimates. Dan, while you're down there in Pierre, try to get some of that.
I'll see what I can do, Don.
Lastly, the South Dakota's latest business condition index value was sixty point eight, indicating increased optimism about short-term economic growth compared to the prior month. South Dakota's index value remains the highest of any state in the region. The US and the Mid-American values are at fifty point three and forty-nine point six. So we're ten points behind, ahead of both of those, indicating a mix to negative sentiment on short-term economic growth. According to the survey results, more than two-thirds of the Sply managers expected a twenty twenty-four recession. In the labor market, there hasn't been much movement in South Dakota's unemployment rate, currently at four point one percent, near historical lows, and the second lowest among the states. This is consistent with other labor measures for South Dakota. For example, South Dakota currently has the fourth highest employment population rate ratio at sixty-six point three percent, and the sixth highest labor force participation rate at sixty-seven point seven percent. So a lot of good news on things that are happening in our good old state of South Dakota.
Thanks for updating us on that, Don. Updates, as far as I have, I have basically none either at this point in time, so. At this time, I would entertain a motion to recess and move into executive session.
My understanding is there isn't anything up for our executive session. Oh, then I move to go into, then I move to go into recess for executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Don to go into executive session.
Dan, are you going in there?
Uh, yeah, if it's going to be quick, that's fine.
I'll just take my phone along in with me.
Okay.
I need a motion to, got a motion and a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Ryan.
That's what happens with you. Listen.
I move to go back into regular session.
I have a motion to go back into a regular session.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I move the approval of poor relief issues. CW County Welfare Mental Illness twenty-four dash zero-two zero-zero-one and County Welfare Mental Illness twenty-four zero-two, oddly enough, zero-zero-one. But they are different people. No, I'm sorry, there's just one. It's one person with the same birthday.
Okay, I have a motion to approve.
For a total of five hundred dollars.
Second.
By Wanda, second by Don. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Don, second by Ryan. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I do not know anything about this.